We have provided public notice of two public hearings regarding the consideration of annexation of properties to the city. This first public hearing this evening is for consideration of the proposed annexation of a certain property to the city which Gina J. Terralo and Aaron B. Terralo have petitioned to annex. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Messina?
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Here.
Alderman Sizvarsky?
Here.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley?
I'm sorry, here.
Alderman Woods?
Here.
Mayor Police.
Here. I declare a quorum present. Let the record reflect that the notice of this hearing was duly published in the Daily Herald newspaper. A copy of the published legal notice will be made a part of the record as Exhibit A. The property under discussion is legally described in the legal notice attached hereto as Exhibit A. The property bears a common address of 17W-046 Deer Path Road, Bensonville, Illinois. Any individual present this evening who would like to present testimony concerning the proposed annexation agreement and annexation must be first placed under oath. I also ask that you please raise your hand to be called up to testify. Is there anyone? Okay. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make the public comment? No. I will now entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close that.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kelly. I knew there was something. Ms. Chrissy, please, before we close the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give a brief overview of the request just for the public record. So, the property that is requesting annexation and is subject to the proposed annexation agreement is 17W-046 Deer Path Road. It is highlighted here in white. As you can see, the municipal, existing municipal boundary is here in the dash blue line. The property is currently improved with a single-family home and a detached garage. The petitioner has come forward requesting voluntary annexation to be able to connect to city services. As part of the city's proposed, or excuse me, the new annexation incentive program, the reason for the annexation agreement is that they are requesting participation in that program, seeking reimbursement of certain funds to connect, make those connections. Just for the record, there's, the water main is located on their side of the street and they will be able to connect immediately. The city sewer, however, is approximately 300 feet away, so I apologize, there was a typo in the staff memo. And so, as part of the annexation agreement, the terms are to require connection to the city water within 90 days of execution of the annexation agreement, and then connect to city sewer within 90 days of being within 200 feet of the sewer line. This is consistent with our current regulations for sewer connections. As you will recall, the terms of the annexation incentive program would be to waive the annexation fees, waive the tap-on fees for connection to city services, reimburse up to $5,000, which does not include any interior work that's required as part of this, and then also for the city to patch the street for either the water and/or sewer connections where necessary. It's, just to note, the property will be annexed in as R1, and which actually is consistent with our comprehensive plan and does meet the R1 district standard, so we're not asking them to rezone at this time.
I'll now entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Alderman Messina, Alderman Woods, first and second. Please call the roll.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizvarsky? Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. The council will commence deliberations on the proposal to enter into the annexation agreement and to annex this property later in this meeting. The second public hearing tonight is for consideration of the proposed annexation of certain property in the city for the property at 6 N. Central Avenue. Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Messina?
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Here.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Woods?
Here.
Mayor Police.
Here. I declare a quorum present. I will now open the public hearing. Let the record reflect that this public hearing has been continued from time to time and was to commence this evening. The city has been advised that the petitioner has withdrawn its request to annex this property to the city. Therefore, this hearing is no longer necessary. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. The council will take no further action on this matter. I'd like to call the City Council meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Messina?
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Here.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Woods?
Here.
Mayor Police.
Here. I declare a quorum present. Please stand and join the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Need a motion to approve the City Council minutes of June 16, 2016. I'll move.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Any corrections?
Who did you get for the second?
Peter. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, under Communications and Petitions, I have three people that wish to be recognized. We'll start with Mr. Bruce Larson of 385 to 395 Potter. If you could step to the podium. Did you want to turn on your card as well, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm Bruce Larson, President of Hindsight Holding Incorporated, the owner of the property located at 385 to 395 East Potter Street in Wood Dale, Illinois. My family has owned this building for three generations, going back over 53 years. This building has always been in a light industrial zone district with a variety of low-impact industrial uses. It has over 11,000 square feet of internal space with four fully rented commercial tenants, each of which has two to six employees. There are five doors with front, which front onto Potter Street with 14 fully legal parking spaces which have existed on the property for over 50 years. Every commercial tenant in my building uses all 14 spaces on Potter and the eight parking spaces on Ash for their employees and their customers every business day. As an established business owner and Wood Dale taxpayer, I am gravely concerned about the true intent of the Potter Street beautification project and its corresponding impact on the future viable use of my building. In reading through the comments that have been made about this project and my building in particular, I believe there are a number of misperceptions this board has been operating under and a serious lack of understanding as to how deeply the city's stated effort to eliminate the use of Potter as a parking area will devastate our current tenants. We hear that the reason for this beautification project is due to a rash of complaints the city has received of alleged parking violations in this area, but not once to my knowledge, I repeat, not once to my knowledge, has the city or the police department ever issued a ticket to any of the vehicles or their owners for any alleged parking violations on my property. I'm willing to seek a meaningful dialogue with the city of Wood Dale, but can't help but feel that the concerns of the business owners on Potter Street have been completely ignored until this past week. On Tuesday afternoon, my attorney and I attended a meeting with Mike La Toria and his attorney, along with the city manager, city attorney, and several staff and principals of HR Green to air and discuss our concerns. I have always been willing to work with the city on making part of the frontage of my building more aesthetically pleasing, but cannot agree to allowing a design plan to be approved which will completely eliminate my access to our lawful 14 parking spaces in front of my building. We proposed a number of options which would break up some of the parking, add grass dividers, or even move our existing parking several feet closer to my building so we are no longer parking on the right-of-way line. The main problem we have is that the city does not allow me to retain at least some of the parking on the front of Potter by allowing us access to Potter Street. It will destroy our current business model and deny my tenants the use of the frontage for parking. There is not enough room on the side and rear of our building for parking. My attorney has expressed a willingness to negotiate a solution, but is also prepared to defend my right to access to parking spaces in front of my building. The city needs to listen to both sides of this issue and realize how seriously the current proposal will damage my property use. We want to seek a solution that will work for both sides. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Mr. Bill Welch.
Thank you. I'm here to speak about that same gateway project on Potter Street. I'm a business owner. I'm one of the tenants of Bruce, and I ask that the city, that the council members consider alternatives to the current project design so that we can continue to operate our business at this building with appropriate access and parking for all of my employees and customers while addressing whatever city concerns they have for having the place stay neat and attractive to the city of Wood Dale. I've been a resident of Wood Dale for 33 years. I've been a business owner for about 10 years, and we've bounced around from place to place, and it was always my goal to move back to Wood Dale, and that goal finally happened about five years ago. And I feel like, as a resident, I want to keep my business in Wood Dale, and, you know, this, this project, this proposal would probably cause me to leave or change because it just takes away all of our parking. I've heard mention that it's a gateway to the city. I don't know, you know, with the new highway coming in, I would think that that would be the gateway over there. Over by us, we're zigzagging through houses. There's no light at Ash and Irving. It just seems like you wouldn't want to draw more traffic that way. I just, I hope that there's other considerations and that the city can work with Bruce to find a solution for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. William Koski?
I'm here to offer this question.
Oh, could you state your name when you get up there? And it's 385 Potter. There you go.
My name's Bernita Koski, and we are also business owners of the property of 385. I am here to speak about the gateway project on Potter Street. As a business owner and a tenant of the 385 Potter Building, I ask that the council members to consider alternatives to the current project design so that we can continue to operate our business at this building with appropriate access and parking for our employees and customers, while addressing the city's concern for a neat, orderly, and attractive entrance to the city of Wood Dale. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Michael Marante?
Yes.
395 Potter?
Yes.
I would like to just reiterate what's already been said. I've been in Bruce's building for approximately 15 years. It would be detrimental to my business to have to move during such economic trying times. I own and operate a CNC machining facility, and myself and Bruce and the other tenants in the building are all for beautification in Wood Dale. I've been in, been in and around Wood Dale my entire life. I like Wood Dale. It's a town of choice where I run and operate my business, and we're all more than willing to accommodate the future plans of Wood Dale in the best of our ability, just so that it doesn't affect our parking. I rely on this parking for our customers to come and visit our facility, which is the lifeline of my business. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon?
Well, as Mr. Larson noted and commented on, the City Council has previously sent out information on the Potter beautification project and has notified all the business owners of what the concept plan that the city is looking at shows. We did hold a meeting with a couple of the interested property owners this past Tuesday, and staff will be considering the concepts and the conceptual plans and changes to those plans submitted by the owners. We'll be working with our consultant on that, and I believe the City Council will next be discussing this project at its first, at an August meeting, I believe, the first August meeting. Is that correct, Mr. Murmas?
Okay.
So, I think we'll continue the dialogue with the, with the business owners.
All right. Thank you. And one more public comment, Ms. Melissa Stoll, 145 South Cedar.
Yes, Melissa Stoll of 145 South Cedar in Wood Dale. My question does not, not concern the gateway project on Potter Street. My question is, have there been any trainings or drills or exercises to help improve the safety for the public as a result after the 2015 Prairie Fest last year?
Ms. Dixon, you want to take that?
It's my understanding that you have made comment on any of the safety precautions or drill planning or proper emergency planning at a previous meeting, and that information is of a sensitive nature. I, I want to assure you that city staff is fully aware of the events of last year and what occurred, and all of the plans necessary to properly ensure public safety are underway and will be in effect during the festival, which is really designed to be a very joyful event for the community and to bring people together. But we learn from everything, and we will be prepared for any event that's within our control.
Yes.
Go ahead.
I had not made comments before. I had asked some questions as to, could the pub, what was the city going to do to educate the public on how to safely evacuate in case of severe weather? And I have contacted Illinois Emergency Management Agency, and I have been instructed that the information for basic evacuation procedures is not a security issue, and it is public information, and that, yes, there may be some information, such as any plans in place for a terrorist attack, that you could be relevant to public safety. But in this case, it would be, it sounds like a detriment to public safety to not inform the public of safety protocols, practices, and procedures in place. One example being, has there been a safety officer designated for the event? And an officer who would have the authority, well, first of all, whose job it would be to watch the weather, since that was the problem last year? And then, secondly, who would have the authority to call for an evacuation in a timely fashion?
Mr. Murmas?
I did not hear all the question. I heard something about a safety officer, and I can assure you that there is a safety officer in place. That is the only part I heard.
Very glad to hear that.
That's good.
But like I say, if I were, if your children were in school, there are fire drills and tornado drills conducted with evacuation paths not being a security issue. And to the contrary, it's a necessary piece of information that those kids need to have so that they can leave the building safely. And if you were at a swimming pool, there are signs posted for basic evacuation safety, such as evacuations will be called if there's a, if there's audible thunder or visual lightning. And I would think the same principles could be applied to educating the public concerning safety protocols for the Prairie Fest and other outdoor activities, since Prairie Fest is not the only outdoor activity that is sponsored by the city.
Mr. Murmas?
I can assure you there will be signs posted for safety at the fest.
Very glad to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other citizens wish to be heard? A matter is not listed on the agenda? Okay. No written communique. Under mayor's report, we have the combined City of Wood Dale Chamber of Commerce Scholarship Program recipients. I know we did this a few weeks ago, but we had lost audio, so this evening I'm going to read the students' bios. Those that won. Kayla Paz attended Addison Trail High School, where she was on honor roll for four years, junior and senior years. She was a member of the National Honor Society, as well as the Technology Center of DuPage National Honor Society for senior year. She was active in Italian Club, Psychology Club, and Best Buddies. Ms. Paz plans to attend four years at Lewis University, majoring in forensic criminal investigation, in hopes of becoming a homicide detective. Possible candidate, chief. Sky Palumbo. She was on the highest honor roll for all four years at Lake Park High School, also the tennis and batminton, batminton teams for all four years. She served on sophomore and junior, senior council, class council. Ms. Palumbo will be attending Elmhurst College in the fall and plans to pursue a degree and career in accounting. Hina Amin. In addition to a full schedule of AP classes, Ms. Amin has served on the student council for four years and has been a member of the National Society for three. Her activities include the tennis team, basketball, batman, the math team, and the chess team. Her community service record is equally impressive, with a class rank of one and a double major in accounting and finance. Ms. Amin will likely achieve her goal in business as CFO of a corporation. What's your preference? Jessica Bango. In addition to AP classes like AP Calculus, AP Spanish, and AP American Writers, Ms. Bango was softball and basketball MVP during her time at Fenton. She was a member of the National Honor Society, as well as on the high honor roll, served on class council, and was a member of the math team for four years. Her community service is extensive and includes helping out at many of the events at Fenton. Ms. Bango plans to attend the Marquette University of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and will most likely pursue her love of nature with career in the sciences. Samuel Sanders. Mr. Sanders had a senior schedule that included several AP classes, including calculus, chemistry, environmental science, and statistics. During this time at Fenton, he participated in baseball as both player and manager, the chess team, and kaleidoscope. He spent several semesters each year on the honor rolls. Samuel will be attending Aurora University and plans to major in biology, pre-med, in the hopes of becoming a doctor. Michael Stewart. Mr. Stewart spent all four years at Fenton on the cross-country cra, track team? Sorry.
Track team.
Track team. As well as two years on the swimming team. He spent time volunteering at the Schaumburg Sports Center at Fenton. He discovered an interest in cooking and plans to spend two years at College of DuPage before transferring to another university, pursuing a degree in culinary arts and planning a career as a chef. And Ruka Shastri, Ms. Shastri, has been very active her entire time at Fenton, spending all four years on student council, the math team, the school's diversity club, stunt, and the girls' tennis team. She was on the high honor roll for four years, in addition to being an AP scholar, a member of the National Honor Society, and receiving top senior award, Fenton's finest. Ms. Shastri plans to attend the University of Illinois at her Branisher Champagne to pursue her interest in health field and achieve her goal of becoming a pediatrician. Next, we have the Water Rats, Wood Dale Water Rats team, swim team, donation request. We have, we have to formalize the, we need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Art Antoni? For $500, is that correct, Mr. Woods?
Yeah, $500 sounds good.
That's, as in the letter? Mr. Catalano?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, today we had a tour of Power Solutions, one of our businesses in town. Power Solutions International Incorporated is a leader in the design, engineer, manufacturer of emission-certified alternative fuel power systems. PSI provides integrated turnkey solutions to leading global original equipment manufacturers in the industrial and on-road markets. The company's unique in-house design, prototyping, engineering, and testing capacities allow PSI to customize clean, high-performance engine that run on a wide variety of fuels, including natural gas, propane, biogas, gasoline, and diesel. Applications that include forklifts, aerial lifts, industrial sweepers, aircraft, ground support, arbor, agricultural, and construction equipment. In addition, PSI develops and delivers power systems, purpose-built for Class III to Class VII medium-duty trucks and buses. PSI is actively hiring at all levels, including production, assembly, operations, engineering, shipping, and receiving, administrative, and more. Visit PSI at 101 Middle Drive, Wood Dale, Illinois. That concludes my report. Mr. Murmas, menors.
One report, Mayor. I'm sure all the residents are aware there is an excessive heat warning in effect for our area for the next few days. We would like everyone to remember, for this heat warning and all future heat warnings, that City Hall is a 24-hour designated cooling center. We do have cases of water available. In addition to City Hall, the Park District and Wood Dale Library are also both cooling centers during their normal business hours. If any residents at home are aware of anybody that they would like to be checked on, you can call the non-emergency police number at 630-766-2060. That concludes my report.
Thank you. If no objections, do I have any objections before I entertain a motion for the consent agenda? I need a motion?
May I make that motion?
Gene was the second.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the items on the agenda. Item number one, an ordinance approving a special use and a planned unit development for an existing park commonly known as Central Park pins 03-10-404-001 through 009 in the city of Wood Dale. Item number two, a resolution seeking to approve a contract between the city of Wood Dale and Baxter and Woodman for the South wastewater treatment plant study in a not-to-exceed amount of $37,260. Item number three, approval of purchase of snow fighting equipment for truck number 231 from Monroe Truck in an amount not to exceed $11,558. Item number four, approval of final payment request for Archon Construction for the Central Avenue sanitary sewer project, not to exceed amount $32,841.13. Item number five, approval of final payment request for Marten Construction for the Ward II Phase II project in an amount not to exceed $179,736.53. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sizvarsky?
No.
Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, committee chairman reports planning and zoning. Alderman Catalano? I have two, Mayor. Resolution authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement for the property commonly known as 17W-046 Deer Path Road in Bensonville, Illinois. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions on that? Eugene? Do you have a question? Alderman Wesley?
So, as the annex is property and then it goes, it will be, it will be changed to Wooddale?
That's coming up.
Go ahead, Ms. Dixon.
The post office probably assigned it a Bensonville address for posting purposes, but it'll become a Wooddale address.
And will they?
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
Will they change that address up?
I believe they will, because 17 West 046 is an unincorporated address. So, actually, I think we assign the address and the post office changes it to the address we assign.
All right, a motion and a second. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is an ordinance annexing property bearing the common address of 17 West 046 Deer Path Road, Bensonville, Illinois, to the City of Wooddale, Illinois. That is my motion.
Second.
Sorry, motion and a second. Any questions on this? I need a roll call on this.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sartino?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
Welcome, Wooddale.
Welcome.
Welcome to Wooddale.
Welcome to Wooddale. You'll be later.
Smile.
Give us time.
Next, item number three, res, oh, sorry.
That's the end of my report.
Right, these two have been taken.
Right, thank you.
Right, we just, three and four have been removed. Thank you, Alderman Catalano. Public Health and Safety, Alderman Wesley.
Mayor, I have one report. An ordinance amending Chapter Five, Article 3111, Section 5.305 of Miss McColl, the City of Wooddale, of a 1993 as-needed admin to decrease by one, the number of Class AR liquor licenses authorized for insurance.
That is your motion?
That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Sunny. Any questions on this? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sartino?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
That's the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works, Alderman Woods?
I have two reports, Mayor. One, an approval of purchase of a replacement RTV through Russo Power and National Joint Powers Alliance in an amount not to exceed $14,485.2.
That is your motion?
I guess that's my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sartino?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
No.
Alderman Woods?
No.
Okay, that passes.
Next, approval of partial payment request number three to RA Mancini for the Mill Road Water Main Project in an amount not to exceed $251,253.46. That is my motion.
Second.
Motion. Any questions on this one? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Is the punch list all done, everything played here? You know why I am the punch list king here?
This is not a final payment for the project, so this is a partial payment, so there is still, I'd see any work to be done.
You have a follow-up question?
No, could you?
Go ahead, Mr. York.
Do you send that list to us, whatever may be done?
I can get the punch list. It may not happen for tomorrow morning, but.
It could be next week. I, of course.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sartino?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes.
That is the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance and Administration, Alderman Jacob.
Two reports today. First is, I make a motion for approval of an emergency purchase to repair part for the flusher in an amount not to exceed $11,965 through standard equipment. That is my motion.
Second.
Any questions on this? Alderman Roy Wesley.
Could you refresh what happened to the?
Mr. York.
Flusher.
The hydraulic pump had a small hole in it that was leaking hydraulic fluid into the water tank. It was emergency repair, because if we would continue to abuse that, the water could have been sucked into the hydraulic pump, which would have destroyed the hydraulics in our flusher. So, it needed to be repaired.
Go ahead, Mr.
It wasn't, it wasn't malice, it was just a wear item.
Alderman Wesley, go ahead.
Is this a new pump, or is this a rebuild?
Mr. York.
I believe it's a new pump.
Mr. Wes, Alderman Wesley, follow?
Woods or me?
Wesley. Did I say Woods? No, I said Wesley.
So, in return ask, how long would it took if you went out for a rebuild?
Go ahead, Mr. York.
Yeah, I do not know. This is, we went to standard equipment, who we originally purchased the equipment from. I don't, to be honest with you, I'm not sure if it is a new or if it is rebuilt through standard. We just, we got the equipment from standard equipment. I can find that out for you.
I'd like to know that information.
All right. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sartino?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley? Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes.
Okay. Next report, I make a motion to approve emergency purchase to repair the City Hall generator in an amount not to exceed $35,700. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I have, just two questions on this. So, they went, they came out and looked at it. Is that how this went? And they said it's going to cost $35,000, or is that?
Mr. York, you take it that way? Okay.
Yes, we had two companies come out and took a look at the machine and said that it would take $35,000 to repair the machinery.
That's including the rentals?
Including the rental of the, of the standby generator that's out there right now.
Good, follow? Good.
So, on a follow-up on that, so, we know it's $35,000. So, is that the final price to repair this, or are they going, start tearing it apart, and the next thing I know, is this just for repairing it or buying a brand new?
Mr. York.
This is to repair it, to do a brand new one, when it is going to be about $73,000 or $74,000. So, this is the quote that we got from them. They are not completed with the rebuild of the project. They are still working on that. They're waiting for final parts to come in from Generac, so they can do the last final pieces. There was about three parts that they were missing. But, they are waiting for those. They were hopefully, they were hoping to be in by today. I was there today looking at the generator, and there was still some work that needed to be done with it. So, hopefully, by the middle of next week, that generator will be back in full operations, and the emergency temporary generator will be removed.
You have a follow-up?
One more.
Go ahead.
So, the $35,700, right, get this straight here, that, so, this is a, well, whatever the final price is, but, you ain't going to come back next month and say, didn't work, we got to go out and buy a new one. So, you're trying to tell me, this is what it's going to cost right now to get that generator up and running?
Mr. York.
That is what we've been told by the company that's working on it, that that is all the parts that we need to repair all the problems.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Is there warranty on this, on their work?
Mr. York.
There is. I don't know what it is off the top of my head. I think it's a one-year part and six months of labor, I believe. I don't know off the top of my head. I have to look at the sheet.
I'd like to go a little further into that discussion that Alderman Eugene Wesley just said, about the, the repair for extras and stuff. Did you get a contract, I mean, I take it you got a contract on this basically of all the parts and everything and signed?
Yeah.
Mr. York.
I believe it's in your packet.
Okay. So.
Go ahead, something else?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
I don't know actually what happened to this. Was a human there or not? I don't, not sure. But, I'd like to, do we have other, are we going along with other procedures? So, is it something that made this go wrong, that it could, could not happen again?
Mr. Mermis.
I believe I put a brief written report together. If I did not, I'll send it out again on Friday. But, there is a report out there.
Okay.
Alderman Messina, you are next.
I don't know if I missed this in the packet, but that $35,000 cost included the rental, which I knew, but what was that amount for the rental?
Mr. York.
There's an original rental cost of $6,500 that we had to pay. The other company that we initially called in, that were able to provide us with a generator within about 12 hours. After we got the second quotation, they, we, we sent that generator back. They brought Charles Equipment, brought in the new generator. The cost of that generator, I believe, was $2,500 for whatever the duration of time it was for them to put the machine back together. So, originally, it was three weeks. Three weeks is come and gone, and they're still not done with it, because they were waiting for parts. But, they're not going to charge us for anything more than that original cost that was included with the, I believe it was $2,500.
Okay.
It's in the, it's in that quote sheet that's in the packet.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, the $2,500 is the cost from the company repairing the generator?
Yes.
Okay. And then my final question was, what was my final question? Oh, electrical. Is that part of this cost, or?
Mr. York.
I guess what?
Like install, like installation, everything?
Yes.
Electrical, okay, okay.
Yes, the original company that came in, we paid them a little bit, we paid them extra for, for bringing the generator and making sure that it hooked up to our current system, and then ultimately taking it down. Well, and then when they unplugged it, the new guy just plugged it right into that, to that system.
So, that's included. Okay, thanks.
Alderman Sartino, you had your hand up?
Yes, and looking at the packet on page 221, this work order, I don't know if this is in reference to the generator you're referring to now, but clearly, it states on the bottom here that this is an estimate only, and additional parts and labor might be required after the unit is disassembled. So, you said that earlier when Alderman Wesley questioned the amount, that you had the impression that's it.
Mr. York.
And like I said, we're down to like three parts left to put together, and we haven't been asked for any other additional parts or any additional costs.
But it could happen.
Go ahead.
It could, like any other mechanical project, when you're putting things back together. But, as of right now, we don't see, we don't see that happening.
Thank you. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sartino?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
That is the end of my report, Mayor.
Next, under other business, airport noise report. Alderman Jacob?
Two items here. Number one, I would like to, at the Prairie Fest, ask people come visit the Alhira Noise Group tent, which will be at the Prairie Fest. And two, the flight rotation plan is in effect currently, and we need people's feedback. That was, everyone was mailed a brochure from the city. On the back, it has the number to contact for comments, and it is on our website. So, I ask everybody, comment. We need feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. And Stormwater Commission?
No, no report.
Thank you. We do have two other items. Resolution authorizing extension to the term of possession and license to park on the city right-of-way granted to Alhira Community Center Incorporated concerning the property commonly known as 140 West Commercial Street, Wooddale. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
This is for the, Mr. Mermis, go ahead, do you want to take that?
This is the extension of Alhira's lease for an additional three months, of which they're in month two. This would be the first council meeting that we could have passed it, and their, their new date for move-out is September 16, if I'm not mistaken.
You have a follow-up? Go ahead, Alderman Roy Wesley.
So, what are they doing now?
Mr. Mermis.
This was just ratifying the agreement we had previously talked about. This is for the 140 commercial property. They were originally supposed to be out, and we gave them a three-month extension to September. Whatever they're doing after that is not a concern to this contract extension.
Okay. Do we have a second?
We do have a second.
Okay.
Alderman Jacob?
Alderman Jacob. All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sartino?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, resolution authorizing the City of Wooddale to enter into a purchase and sale agreement for the purchase of property commonly known as Wood, Illinois Route 83 and Oak Meadows Drive, permanent index numbers 03-22-207-007. Next number is 03-22-207-008. Next number is 03-22-207-010. And next number is 03-22-207-011. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Alderman Catalano? Oh, roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sartino?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
I recuse myself.
And that passes. Next, approval of list of bills, July 7. Alderman Jacob?
I make a motion to pay the list of bills for July 7, 2016, for $868,464.64. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I didn't hear that.
Second.
Thank you.
Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sartino?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next.
I make a motion to pay the list of bills for July 21, 2016, for $1,195,238.31. That is my motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Questions on these bills? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Mr. Mayor, on, on page two and five, there are final payments on the Prairie Fest. My question is, why am I making final payment when we haven't even finished the fest?
Yes, we are.
Mr. Mermis.
Typically, different contracts have different requirements. In the past, a tent company or a fence company, or whatever company would require half down and then half after the fest, or bands would require all in advance of the fest. The particular company you're referencing this year wanted half deposit and then another half before the fest was completed. So, each one would be individual, depending on the contract.
So...
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
Mayor, let me ask the legal opinion here. So, if we choose to pull the, the two, two bills that I, I'm ready to make the motion, to pull, pull these two bills, can we do that here?
Ms. Dixon.
Without seeing the contracts or the agreements that the city entered into, I can't answer that question for you because within the agreement, you may have agreed to a payment schedule. And if you choose not to follow that payment schedule, you could very well be in breach of the contract. I can't answer that because I haven't seen the documents.
Okay.
Go ahead, follow-up.
For that question, then I am asking that we pull two bills off until we see those contracts because...
I'm not saying, I'm not saying no one saw them. I'm saying I didn't see them.
I understand.
I have, I have a question that might clear something up. Brad, these checks, are they going to go out after they deliver the tents next week? Mr. Wilson, I would take it, they're going to deliver the tents, set them up?
Should we go off route? Should we?
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Sure. There's a couple of different ways you could probably go about this. One would be, is the mayor just opined to hold the check until they deliver everything, which would probably be the easiest, the most straightforward. The other, which would be, to your point, would be to hold the delivery or mailing of those checks until the documents were reviewed. But, if we go with the mayor's route, then we would have adequate time to do that in the interim anyways. The one on page five, however, is, like I said, for all the entertainment and that was in the contract. I, I've looked at that one a couple of times. The one on page two, I'd have to look at that one again. But, the one on page five, though, I know that is a part of the contract.
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
Question you just asked, are these checks going to be out?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Will the questions, the question you asked, will these be mailed out before the Prairie Fest, before they get to delivery? According to the way our bill is labeled, these checks will be mailed out Friday. Am I correct?
Mr. Wilson.
Is that normally what they do?
SOP is to mail them out the day after the council meeting, so yes, that would be tomorrow.
So, maybe they would be mailed out.
Mr. Mermis.
But, that wasn't your question. You asked if we could hold the other half of the tent, which we, we could theoretically do after it's passed. We can hold it.
But, the mayor just asked the question, will they be mailed out after the tents are delivered? And he said...
And Mr. Wilson said?
We could.
We could.
But, we have to make a motion on the floor to hold off that check. Am I right, Mayor?
I don't think it has to be...
Ms. Dixon.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I don't think it has to be a motion. If you're, if what you're asking is for the finance director to hold the check until the tents are delivered, I think he can certainly do that.
Why won't hold two of them?
Hold on a second. Mr. Mermis, on the bands?
Historically, we have never done that. That's been the same every year. It's always prepaid, always.
The bands are always prepaid.
We do, there are protections in the event that people don't perform. So, and, I mean, it is not unusual for entertainment to want to be paid. I understand your concern, you want to make sure you have performance, but there are protections for the city in the event of non-performance.
Go ahead, follow-up?
Believe me, Mayor, I, I understand that 100 percent.
Ms. Dixon.
The problem is, I don't think any of these council members seen these contracts and we have it in the past for Prairie Fest. And now all of a sudden, this final payment for the tent, I'm not in favor of doing it right now.
Don't we have a meeting?
But, we're not doing that.
Yes, we do.
He's going to hold the check when they deliver the tents. They'll get paid.
But, there's stuff on it.
Go ahead. Are, are you, any other questions? Alderman Messina, go ahead.
Just to add to the bands, you're more likely for them not to show up if you don't give them a check than if we give them half now and, and half after they perform. And it is common practice. They, they do want money upfront, some of it.
Right. Go ahead. You have something else?